It is six thirty. I'll call a meeting to order. As far as the agenda amendments, we have none tonight. Also, we have no additions to the pay orders. The Select Board minutes from February seventh, twelve, Wilson, the second filth in discussion.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of February seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, any comments, anything that needs to be revised? Hearing done, I'll move the motion all in favor of acceptance. Aye.
Aye.
Any vote? The pay orders for February twenty-three certainly stand at twenty thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars, forty-one cents, and as I said, there are no additions. I've had a motion, the second, to advise.
I make a motion to accept the pay orders for twenty thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars and forty-one cents. Second.
Do we have anything that appears to need to be corrected, amended, or you seek advice on?
I take it a proline spinner, something for the road, right? Proline spinner?
Must be part of the standard?
I don't know. It's going to a fifty-three-hundred account. That's why I was thinking was something...
It could be the gearbox.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, shaft replacement here. In the truck.
How is it?
That's cheap.
Any others? Hearing done, I move the motion.
I have a question on the clock for an ice out raffle.
Yes.
I take it that's what these are?
Yep.
Was that... I mean, where did that come from? We don't have a record of it, so it didn't come from them, obviously.
I think it's a bond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be on the law, on the law for different ones.
So we're still playing big and long for days?
Yeah, we still have that. What was it we're using up until by the end of June thirtieth?
Oh, okay.
Six thousand or whatever that is.
Yes, that line, yeah.
Okay.
The clock is at, is that my hand, right? And Michael's gonna pick up the road tomorrow. Get that also.
Call the lake or something?
Yeah. And it's gonna be all rigged up so that we'll know the day and time, then people can pull out their slip and finish that day.
All good then?
Yeah.
I'll move the motion, the amount is twenty thousand three sixty-three forty-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? On will mentions, we got a couple here. Herb Fredericks opened up Homewood Stone Road after his last severe storm. It was also brought to our attention that Steve George does a similar thing down there on the Timber Hill Estates, those roads on the south end. Would also note that we just got an email in on the transfer station on their annual report or the annual inspection. They passed with a hundred percent. Building committee.
No, must be they didn't.
I don't see who is here yet.
No.
Okay, we'll pass that on. Road commissioner report, Phil.
Yeah, well, not a lot to tell. Mother Nature's been kinda occupying their time. They've been in East Wallingford for, I think, four days now fixing up roads and washouts from the last rain. And I'm not sure that it might happen again this storm. They moved a bunch more snow out of the ditches and stuff. Just the snowpack was so hard that cullards didn't take it. Came out in the roads. The old International's still running good. They haven't had any issues with that. Couple little things, but nothing major. I talked to Pete Turgen on Friday, and he said he's had nowhere or heard anything on that injector pump. And he said we're still in line, so we don't know when that's gonna get repaired. Other than that, I don't think there's too much else going on down there. I don't know if you've heard back from any of the Grazer stuff other than Case? I haven't heard from either John Beer or Cat. So maybe I'll give them a call tomorrow. I thought maybe they'd sent you an email or a price on it. I haven't heard anything. But other than that, I don't think there's a lot going on right now. The only thing I do, did talk to Steve about was this little episode that happened this weekend down in the Crick. He was down there right after it happened, and the road was bare, and it was sand covered. It was not, it didn't need any salt or anything. It was dry and just covered with sand, so. I'm not sure what happened. I wasn't around. I was gone, but I got pictures of it. So I just wanted to clarify that the road wasn't slippery because it didn't go out. It was road conditions that caused it. It was not like what Steve said, so. Other than that, I haven't heard any more about it, so I don't know what else went on with it, but.
Well, with very little prospect on fourteen Kenworth, how's maybe fourteen International doing for now?
Good. They've had no, no major thing at all. They've been running right along with it. She's been hauling every day with it to East Wallingford, so. And she sanded and plowed with it both storms, so.
I have seen a couple of times loading it. It's been, I'll talk to him real quick. She doesn't seem to mind driving it, but, you know, doesn't seem to hear my lyrics.
Yeah, that's one of the things. You know, we could, we may get it back in a week or two, you know? Maybe a while before you get that back. Sorry, I'm telling. I don't know if there's anything else going on, Sandy, I have...
You have, we have bridge and structure grants and class-two painting grants. Deadline's coming up if you have some projects.
All right, I'll talk to Steve on those. You know, we still have to do one down by Maple Street, right?
Yeah.
This year.
Any other questions or... Public comments. Actually, Phil, you're the only public here tonight, so.
You're a little sensitive.
We're looking good so far. Special weights. I assume that we're the same as we were last year. Sandy, do we need to sign off on that?
Not unless, we have, we have none, right?
No, we have no sign.
We don't have to sign up. We don't have any to...
There were no changes?
Nope. They just ask every year, so. We don't have, it would have to be below sixteen thousand on Van Wick, and we don't have, we're not going to blow it out, so it's not a special weight.
In that same vein, on the mud season, I don't think we've in the past posted anything under mud season, have we?
No, we haven't posted in quite three years.
Yeah.
The only one logging that was logging in town was closing, but on West Oak, we even doubt he's cleaned up and counted. Boy, I don't think there's anybody else logging anywhere around Wallingford that I know of. They clean, they're on Haven Hill. They're gone off from there.
I know. I can't honestly think of any roads in town that virtually any truck, car, you'd use them. All righty then. If nothing else, I guess we're good.
Okay.
We have a item here, Conservation Commission resignation. I've got a note that Nick Brzezinski is resigning or wishes to resign from the Conservation Commission. Again, I don't think we've ever denied allowing a person to resign. I don't know how it would. I assume that we all accept that, and it's been a letter for his...
Yep.
We also do have that Dennis, I'm gonna get this right, Duhing?
Yep.
Is looking at being reappointed to that commission. I don't personally know him.
I do.
You do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think he's doing very good.
Again, it's very seldom that we deny appointment to somebody. Is everybody in agreement to have him here?
Sure.
By consensus. We also had a notification that the Conservation did not get the earth program, which they were looking for. However, at the time, they did provide us with information on another grant that was become available. And we have our Carol and the people on that Conservation Committee to apply for that. I assume that everybody on the committee or on the board here is in agreement.
Okay, I'm okay.
Yes.
The Recreation Tread Program, I believe that's through the Conservation Commission, too, would like a letter of support on their, the rim trail at the Stone Meadow. It would be due by March first according to our paperwork here. Are we in agreement to have Sandy write up the water for that, that we can sign? Okay.
As a move, we've just discussed that at all.
Yeah, that's what we can get.
This is all a difference.
I think they just changed the application.
I think it's in the just online, so it'll be very simple. Just need approval.
Yeah, we've got, we just gave the approval, so.
Yep, good.
The ARPA Committee has met. They've notified us that Richard Cortech wishes to be removed from that committee that he wishes not to continue. Again, I assume that we can send him a letter thanking him for applying. There was also a person that they had recommended. I have been informed that she would like to withdraw her name. So at this time, that position will be vacant. I think that probably we could post the position as being open. I think quite probably, with as important of a committee as this is, that we will quite probably be getting people volunteer whether we post the position or not. Certainly by next meeting, if we've not had some people that are interested, I would at that time look at possibly posting it. But right now, I think that we can probably rely on the fact that there will probably be volunteers for that position.
If it's not too much trouble to post it now, I would say we wouldn't post it now and then see, use that as the way that we get the word out. I mean, is there any reason to not do it then?
If you think that we should post it, I'd...
I think if you post it, then you don't have to worry about waiting for people to hear it, the word about. It'll be posted, it'll be out there, and then whoever applies comes.
Very good. I'll hear Kathy Sedetton. Okay, go ahead. My consensus.
Got it.
Bulk mail permit. Permit, yeah. We're regular with the ARPA Committee appointment. Sandy has included two other items here. I'm gonna take them at this time. They aren't really an amendment. It's been in our paperwork here. One is the Little League. Mike Robelito from the Ruben County Little League, he'd like to send out the registration forms to the Little League this summer. In the past year, we've joined into the Ruben County organization that's handling Little League, and they have been using our field down there. I'm assuming that the board here is in agreement to let them go ahead and do their regular registration and carry on as well.
Yes, this is the only way our kids get Little League, right? Is by being part of this group, so I say yes.
Yeah. Also, Sandy made a note that she would like to start looking at the summer hires for Elephant Lake over there. Bennington County, she's noted here, has following courses available for recertification, and the amounts for the members and non-members. I would just note that I look at the seven-day paper out of Burlington. They have a rather massive job application, your job wanted section in there. And I am seeing already the Burlington organizations, Jerrico, and a couple of the other towns up north are already advertising for their summer help. Actually, I thought about maybe applying for the one in Burlington if I live there, but...
As a lifeguard?
I've got a question. What is the age requirement to be a lifeguard?
Well, I mean, our employment requirement's sixteen, so.
I have, I have a very strong swimmer. My house is not quite old enough yet. He already says he would like to lifeguard, so.
Oh, excellent.
But that's a few years away for him to apply. He's not old enough yet.
I'm not being smart, but it might be closer than you think.
Yes, very much.
So I guess we're in agreement that she can go ahead and post that stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Did we reimburse if they take the lifeguard?
I know that's been a topic that's been debated a couple of times. You know, what if we pay for it and then they don't show up or if they quit?
We would only reimburse at the end of the summer, right? So they would have to do the job in order to get reimbursement. If they decide we want to go that route.
The one thing I've thought about here, too, is that I want an agreement to reimburse them at the end of the summer. I would at least like to leave an open option on our card that if we get somebody who's truly qualified or truly wants a job, and they are not able to pay for the in advance, I think we should leave it open that we would consider giving a, what's the word for it?
Scholarship?
Yeah, funding for it.
Payable advance loan.
Not to offer it as a... Okay, I think we're set on that.
Good.
Bulk mail permit. Susan Cowley's asked permission to use the town's bulk mail permit for funding post letters on behalf of the Gilbert Library.
Yes.
As she mentions here, they've done it, I think, every year that I've been on the board, and that goes back, you know, a decade. I would assume that they're part of the town, so that's a reasonable request.
I agree.
Yes.
Yes.
We're all good there. Security policy. You have in here, I believe, a guide that tells you who currently has keys and outlines the security itself. I'm assuming there, again, that...
What do the Xs mean as opposed to numbers?
Because do you have a key and they don't have a number on them? Some keys actually have a number on them.
Oh, okay. So we have plenty of keys.
Yeah, but a lot of the front door keys, because they're special keys, they have a number on them, as you can see.
Okay.
But then a lot of these are just the...
Okay.
Is J.Y.'s in anything anymore?
Yeah, the Masons.
Oh, okay. Good.
That's their, see those tall pillars? That's theirs. They use for their meetings.
Again, this is one I don't believe that has to be signed off on, and I think we're all in agreement with it.
It's just a new permission thing.
Recreation Committee. Sandy did get an email questioning this. I don't believe that since we have the resignation of the remaining members from the committee that we've advertised or even really discussed whether we want to go with a recreation committee. We have had, I believe, three different persons who have on their own applied or requested information to consider joining that committee. There was a Sumio Seo, Daniel Elcorn, and a Morgan Over. Those are the three that have basically applied for a committee that is still ad hoc. I have no problem with the three leaving serving on that committee.
I think we should just note that Daniel Elcorn is a non-resident, but I don't see a problem with him being on the committee. I think if you have, like, one person on the committee who's a non-resident, it just shows that there's interest beyond us in being involved.
Where does he live?
I think he lives in Rutland. But he has Wallingford connections, and I know a couple of years ago, he was the only reason why there was a basketball program when Ben was doing it. He, it was because of Dan that we had a basketball program that year. So I just want to make note of that, that even though he's not a Wallingford resident, I don't see a problem having one member of the committee be a non-resident. I don't know what other people sent to Dan.
This is wrong. I thought it was Randall.
Maybe it is Randall?
I thought, I thought when you sent the letter, you said he lived in Randall.
It could be Randall. I know, I might have thought in Rutland, because I know he's connected with Rutland a little. And that might be where I got the wrong name.
I really have concerns about somebody that's not a resident being part of this committee. And frankly, I really think we ought to look at whether we want a RECC committee or not. And if we do, I think it needs to take a different direction than it has in the past. It needs to be more a group of working people, like in my opinion, and not just individuals that are gonna hold a meeting.
And not do anything.
And not do anything. We don't need, we don't need another committee telling us what we need to do or how to spend the money, in my opinion. We need people that want to get involved and do things, do activities. Maybe form, I don't know what you would call it even to give it a name, but somehow develop a group of people that want to do different activities, and they're willing to take it on and do it on their own.
So I know Sandy put here on adopting a mission statement, and it sounds like maybe that might be an avenue that we want to go down is coming up with a mission statement. That's gonna take some time to do. In order to do a proper mission statement, you want to take things, take all those big ideas, and then go ahead and categorize those big ideas and then narrow them. I think maybe one of the problems with the RECC committee is not really having a clear focus. And that by coming up, creating a mission statement, we can better come up with what we believe our committee should be doing and how best to support all the residents of the town. I think town recreation is important, and I think addressing it is an important thing to do.
Under what umbrella is this program?
That's not under the RECC committee, is it?
Yeah.
It is?
Well, it's under their budget.
Okay.
They kind of run separately. I mean, you know, the co-directors have really operated separately, you know?
Right, we hire them, but they don't get any direction from the RECC committee, do they?
No.
Okay, that's kind of what I was thinking.
They're autonomous. I mean, they just...
The budget is a component of that, right?
To me, our RECC programs are pretty well established. We have the lake. We have the little, the people that do Little League. We have the football. It's just... I don't see a RECC committee having any value unless they want to come up with some new ideas, and then they act on them, not just throw out ideas.
So again, a mission statement.
Yeah, it has to be, I didn't want, I guess you could turn it a mission statement, but it seems to be, it has to be more of a directive or a philosophy for the group.
Which is what a mission statement would accomplish?
Now, I'm gonna have to kind of let go with you. I think we need to discuss it a little bit more. But, you know, with all the summer programs, Julie and Sandy and Jill, they're the ones that, you know, kind of like coordinate everything. And the RECC committee has, you know, no involvement in that. Then you have, the summer program is run by Kat Troopie, and she sets it up that way. So what does that leave with the RECC committee? What are their responsibilities? Because you're right, the Little League, something, you know, Mike Rob, whatever, is doing, and...
Peterson does football.
Yeah. It just seems like he's got a point. I mean, there's between the three people here, and another one doing, you know, the program. I don't see a committee involvement in it. Someone to think about. And I think we, you know, I think it's a good thing to discuss again.
Yeah, I do think if we're gonna have a committee, we need to come up with a mission statement, like Kathy said.
And is that something that we want to do? Do we want to put some meetings aside to look at that issue? Or we can come up with one meeting, say... Sorry, I got loud. One meeting, like a brainstorm, or do we want to have like a little ad hoc committee? All of the select board that sits down and discusses this and then brings the ideas back to the... Or just to show where it needs to go? That's what I was thinking, that maybe we had a committee. So should I make a motion? I make a motion that we make a subcommittee from the select board to come up with a mission statement for the RECC.
You say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any vote?
Volunteer?
Yep. I'll be off in a minute.
Select board comments and concerns. Anything anybody on the board would like to bring up?
So the Conservation is here now.
I know, I'll get right back to that.
I just have to ask, Phil, it just came to my mind. Was that a flood culvert or something that caused the flood down near John Squire's house recently?
Oh, yeah, it was state, yeah.
Oh, it was the state?
That's state crossing there.
Oh, okay. It was just kind of shocking to hear that Route Seven was down the line right down there.
They just cleaned it out, put some salt in it.
They pointed it in the...
We had some friends from South Carolina. Let us know that Brooks had it closed.
I get that.
About Dennis.
Who got the information from his girlfriend.
Didn't we point?
But they were, they didn't know who wanted them. They were just meeting downstairs during the time, so. They were just meeting downstairs during the time, so they just came up with that. Where is this on here? Here, here it goes. They're here for these two things, but we, so they'll be happy to know.
This might abbreviate it just a little bit. We appointed Dennis several years.
Yeah.
You did? Oh, I had this big introduction.
You can still undergo, so. Go ahead, Ralph.
Oh. Do you want me to?
Yeah.
No, I don't have a big introduction. Just like I said, Nick Przemski found himself engaged out of town and other things and could not participate as he would like to, or we would like him to. So we needed another member, and Dennis had, they brought the house across from the Tarble Farm, and he's done a beautiful garden out there. Dennis and Carol, his partner, and he's a pretty handy guy. He's got some good ideas, he's got some muscle, and we can use him. So, we're glad to have him.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, good.
He had me with one of the emails I got, said that he was picking up bags of garbage and things like that. I was already sold out.
He's very conscientious about environmental things.
I was, I was taking a walk over. It's Stone Meadow, Little Lake, and Dennis was over there with a little garbage bag and was picking up litter. I was like, oh, there you go.
Yeah, like the Taco Creek wrote it, seems to just keep occurring.
Yeah.
It's very bad, really bad. We also did get a email on the Ursa program. I understand Sandy's been in touch with you, Carol, about another possible grant. I assume we gave you the go-ahead to apply for it, and that we would write a letter of support if that was needed.
We have decided not to go forward with the other grant.
Yeah.
Because, number one, the time is too short. Number two, I think we have made the decision that what we really want, rather than the two people who we interviewed for doing the Ursa grant, we want someone who is very trail knowledgeable and are hoping that town is going to write and get information about the ABCC tiny grants, which go anywhere from 250 to 600, and see if we can get that. So we could find a person who would come over when the weather is better. I don't want them out there on the ice, certainly they wouldn't see anything, and they might fall. So maybe if we get the tiny grant, we would ask this person to come out and pay him for his time to give us an overview, and most of us, if not just some of us, would go with him when he or she was out there. So I think that's a better way to go. Also, you know, I know the 20% probably is a very common thing, that that was what they were gonna, we would get 20%, we would have to pay for 20% of what was done. And we're sort of frugal. And the 20% could come by materials or labor also, and we just, it was just too fast and.
Donated labor.
We want to, we want to get this right this time. We don't want to get it wrong again. And the trails and the things that are wrong at Stone Meadow will be fine for another year, so. So we'll get busy on that, and hopefully we have some, we get this tiny grant, we find someone to look at the property and when the weather's good, and then we find funds to do what this person suggests, assuming we like what he suggests, or she.
Well, I do have to say, your committee has always been very responsible and holds your requests in what you're doing moving forward. I'm sure this board here will defer to your ideas and thoughts in the future. I've got to say that you're probably one of the hardest working committees that we've had in a long time.
We're all badges. And we have our ribbons.
All of you do a wonderful job.
Thank you. Thank you.
An example for every other committee in this town.
It is really appreciated. But thank you.
Thank you. But we're done, uh?
We're done up here, we'll go back down.
Did I get it?
Oh, yeah.
Is that a sound?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's a written also.
Other business.
Can we come back to the select board comments for a second?
I'm sorry?
Can we come back to select board comments for just a second?
Okay, yeah.
I want, I wanted to probably thank Pat for the time on the board, and all this for your last meeting with us.
Thank you very much.
You've been a very strong, good member, I believe.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
It's really, you've been really informative and enjoyable. Well, she won't be leaving the towns kind of like, she's going for audit, so she'll still be there. And talk about, talk about a needed, thankless job. Thank you for stepping up to do that. We need people to do that, and that's the dirty work, and thank you very much.
Okay, under other business, we did get a, I believe, a contact complaining that they felt that the seniors doubling the transfer station fees was too much for the residents on fixed incomes. And they hoped that we'd either reconsider that or keep in mind the cost to them in the future discussion. I think a number of us on the committee here are probably pretty much on fixed income, so I think I know, at least myself, I can appreciate these people's problems. I, I realize that it's a cost to them, but at the same time, it's a cost to everybody. In towns, the fees that we pay related to the transfer station go up, and I think it's equally unfair to the residents who aren't on fixed incomes that we have to keep raising those fees. I really don't want to tell any segment of town that they're out of luck on things being the way they wish they were. I wish they were there, and I wish we didn't have to raise fees periodically. But unfortunately, it's a fact of life. When you go to Hannelford and you buy a pound of hamburger, and it's now $6 instead of $3.95, it's the same for those of us that aren't fixed as it is on everybody else. I suppose we could consider people who are 65 getting a reduced rate, but it still costs us the same amount of money to process all that garbage. And the people who aren't 65 or in this group are just going to pick up that extra cost out of their money. And face it, those are the ones that have our high school students, our elementary students, kindergarten, family expenses. Some of them are supporting four and five kids at night. I would expect in my sort of this guide that this is happening, but unfortunately, I, I don't think that we can act on this.
No. Well, we talked about this a lot when we were going to raise the rates and also took surveys of all the other towns.
Yeah.
And, you know, we give, no, no other town, I think, gives coupons or gives any, any punch cards to their, to their residents. And most of the people are paying like $3 a bag to dispose of the trash. And so this puts it more on a user basis, because when you're paying $90,000 to run the transfer station plus, plus salaries, you know, it's just going to raise the taxes if you lower the punch card. So it's, it's just going to hit you one way or the other. So, it wasn't done likely, but I think that was the first increase in, as long as I can remember.
Only a few years. We've done good keeping the taxes and expenses down.
I didn't realize until I just was really looking at it. Tenus' taxes are twice as much as ours. They're over 70 cents a hundred. I was really, you know, that's why they can't afford to, you know, in a small town like that, to have services.
I don't see anything else that we have on the agenda. If nobody else has anything to root forward.
I make a motion. I second that.
All in favor, adjourned?
Aye.
We're out.